I just heard lots of reverb.
George, can you hear us now?
Yeah.
All right.
I can hear you too, if you were wondering.
I was the only one complaining.
Just messing with you Travis.
I don't even know what to say. Everybody's picking on me today.
Are we ready?
I think we are.
Recording in progress.
Let's get the show on the road. Okay. All right, welcome everyone to the Provo Municipal Council meeting. Tuesday, February 1st, 5:33 PM. Meetings of the municipal council are now being held in hybrid fashion. That is, members of the public can continue to view council meetings on YouTube or Facebook, or they may attend in person in the council chamber at the Provo City Center. The coronavirus pandemic is not over yet. We encourage everyone who is eligible to get vaccinated and to follow the protocols set by the CDC and our state and local health departments. This meeting is being broadcast live on the web on the Provo City Council YouTube channel, where it will also be available for on-demand viewing. I remind participants to meet your microphone when not speaking to minimize the potential for background noises and conversations to be picked up, recorded, and broadcast for all to hear. Here in the chamber, we have council members Bill Fillmore, Catrice McKay, myself Travis Hoben, David Shipley, Rachel Whipple. Online, we have council members Shannon Ellsworth and George Handley. We're also joined by various members of council staff and a few from the public. Welcome. Today, the opening prayer will be given by Councilor Fillmore.
Our beloved heavenly Father. We bow our heads before thee this evening, Father, and give thanks for our blessings. Thanks that we can live in this free land. Thanks for the community that we are blessed to live in and to serve. We invite a lot of blessings upon the city of Provo, Father. We pray that thou wilt bless the men and women and children of our city. That they might prosper and grow. That families might be strong. That we might merit thy blessing and protection. We ask thy blessing upon this meeting, Father, that thy Spirit might guide and animate us in our thoughts and expressions. And again, thank thee for the opportunity we as a council have to serve the city. And we do so in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
I will give the pledge of allegiance, please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cliff, do you want to read our preamble?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
As indicated on the screen, a required public hearing will be held for certain agenda items prior to council action. After such item has been presented, time to comment will be provided for all those who wish to speak. For items that do not require a public hearing, public comment will still be taken following presentation of the item, but will be limited to 10 minutes. At this time, up to 15 minutes has been set aside for an open public comment period, which is intended to allow comment on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Persons who speak during this time to an item that is on the agenda will not normally be afforded a second opportunity to speak during the comment period specific to that item. During any public comment period, each speaker will generally be listed, limited to two minutes. Due to noticing requirements, no formal action will be taken in this meeting on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Those with comments are invited to approach the podium. Those participating on Zoom will need to use the raise hand feature to indicate they wish to comment. The chair may all choose, the chair may choose to alternate between in-person and online commenters. Please begin your comments by stating your name and city of residence. And you will have two minutes to speak. To assist the city recorder with the minutes, we ask those commenting in person to print your name on a slip of paper, it's available on this table here, and place it in the container near the podium. Online commenters should spell out their names before commenting. The public comment period opens now.
All right. Anyone in the chamber would like to make a public comment on something that's not on the agenda tonight? Any raised hands online?
There are not at this point.
All right, we'll give another second, just in case.
Just a reminder for those who are calling in that you need to hit star nine if you want to raise your hand. When called upon, hit star six to unmute yourself.
All right, if there's still no hands, we'll go ahead and move on. If somebody raised their hands, we can also come back to them. Shows up. Our first action agenda item is an implied motion on a resolution adding the structure known as the Milner Wright Home located at 1115E, 640 South to the Provo Landmarks Register. Provost's neighborhood, Dustin Wright Planner is going to join us and explain what's going on.
All right, thank you very much. The property owner would like to nominate their historic home to be placed on the Provo City Landmarks Register and has applied to do so. Staff has reviewed their application materials with our city code as it relates to nominating properties onto our landmarks register and has taken this, this item has gone before our landmarks commission and a public hearing was held there to discuss this item. And the landmarks commission forwarded a positive recommendation to the municipal council to approve this nomination to add this home to the landmarks register. The home is over 130 years old. It served as a dairy farm residence for many decades in Provost's history. And the applicant, the current property owner has owned it for several years and has put quite a bit of time and energy into restoring it from the condition it was when they acquired it. And staff and the landmarks commission recommend that this item be placed on the register. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys might have for me at this time and be happy to help there.
Thank you, Dustin. We did get a little bit of a spiel on this in the work meeting, so any questions? All right. Well, I guess we'll take a vote on the implied motion, no? Oh, sorry, that's right. Let's open this up for public comment. Anybody who would like to comment in the chamber on this item? Or online? Looks like no one. Okay. Then now I guess we will, well, is there any discussion by the council? Okay. We'll go ahead and take a vote. All in favor? Unanimous in the chamber, Mr. Handley.
Yes.
I'm going to use counselor from now on, Counselor Ellsworth.
Yes.
That is unanimous. Thanks, everyone. All right. Next action agenda item is an implied motion on a resolution appropriating $75,734 in the Economic Development Division in the General Fund for a Sales Tax Increment Post-Performance Payment to East Bay Shopping Center. And this will be presented by Keith Maury. Did we go too fast?
I don't know, let me go check.
All right, he's used to us being so slow. This is one we heard a couple of weeks ago. We heard this in work session a couple of weeks ago. Okay. It just always feels so awkward when nobody has any questions, like, I guess if we don't care. Okay, well. We'll come back to this. No problem. Okay, so we're going to come back to that item. Next item of business is an ordinance amending Provo City Code after 15.08 fees. Citywide application. If you're going to want to comment on this, please call in now, call in or sign in now. Aaron Ardmore.
Aaron, do you want me to take over? This is the same item that was heard in the work session today about impact fee appeals and adjustments. Dixon Holmes presented in that meeting and I answered some questions, but I guess Aaron's demureing because it wasn't really a planning item, even though it went to the planning commission. Let me just, for the benefit of the public, say what this is, is an amendment to the impact fee section of our code. State law requires certain procedures to be met when someone is appealing the application of an impact fee to them. We needed to make some corrections to comply with that. We also, although we had an appeal process, it was not very robust and it didn't define either the procedure or the standards. And so this ordinance does that as well as defining exactly what documents would need to be submitted and what standards they have to meet and how an appeal of the application of an impact fee would be processed. And so I think that's probably sufficient unless there are specific questions.
Go ahead, Counselor Whipple.
I just would like to have an opportunity to review the most recent version of it, which I have not had a chance to do.
And that's fine, what I, that brings up something I should have mentioned before, which is that even though this didn't come from planning staff and was really something that in some ways came from legal and the mayor's office because of an appeal that was heard earlier in the year that brought some of these issues to our attention. It did go to planning commission. There's a council rule in our rules of procedure that says any item coming to the council from planning commission shall be automatically continued to the next meeting if two council members express that desire without needing to make a motion to continue. So, once we're done with the question period and any public comment, the chair will actually ask if there are any council members that are interested in continuing it, as long as two indicate that they are, it'll automatically be continued. I would comment, and I've got no concerns about that, but I would let you know there is a timing element. It's not affected by continuance to the next meeting, but when we became aware that there were some deficiencies in our appeals process, we actually put this, the city put this on the planning commission agenda about five months ago with the purpose of invoking the pending legislation rule so that for the next six months from that time, any appeals would either be stayed or have to follow the procedure contained in this. That six months will be up in March. That doesn't, so as I said, that doesn't affect a continuance until the next meeting, but there is some degree of urgency to pass it before March.
I just will say, based on the draft I'd read, I'm content with the content. I just wanted to be able to review the actual language.
Okay. We need to open this up to public comment, yes. So we'll go ahead and open this item up to public comment. Anyone in the chamber like to comment on this? Anyone online? Okay. We'll close public comment then. Bring it back to discussion. Counselor Whipple expressed a desire to continue this. I guess I'll just ask before we even get into a discussion, does anyone else have a desire to continue it?
I'll support that.
Okay. So, I guess we can move on. We'll, we'll hear any questions or comments next time. So item has been continued. And that was Counselor Whipple and Counselor Ellsworth. All right. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance amending the zone map classification of approximately 1.1 acres at 669 South, 1600 West, from the A11 agricultural to R18 one-family residential zone and authorizing a development agreement. Sunset Neighborhood. Anyone from the Sunset Neighborhood here? Just as a heads up, okay. This will be presented by Aaron Ardmore.
Thank you, council. We briefly went over this in a study session today, but let me just kind of go through the slides. So the property for the zone map amendment is here in the red. It's two five, our two half acre parcels off 1600 West, just south of 600 South. And you can see Sunset Elementary to the north there. Like the notice says, it's currently agricultural zone. The applicant has requested the R18 zone, one-family residential zone with a minimum 8,000 square foot lot requirement so they can subdivide the property into four buildable lots. Staff reviewed this plan against the general plan and against the Southwest future land use map. It complies with those goals and those policies. Plan Commission reviewed this and recommended approval to the city council. So that's where we're at now, and I'll take any questions if you have them.
Any questions from the council?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Counselor Ellsworth.
Last year when we, we passed kind of a tentative policy statement on west side housing and development, how has that been integrated or how does that impact the site? Where are we at with, with kind of advancing what was agreed upon in that statement?
Sure, I can, I can address that. Staff considered that. And from, from the memos and the discussion that's been had on that, it seemed like the cutting off point was anything around 10 acres for mixing of densities or more specifically building types. So this just being a, just slightly over one acre, we felt that this one could move forward in the request that has been given. It's under the four units per acre policy from the Southwest land use map. And we felt that this, this really was okay to move forward at this point.
Just want to check with you that from staff's perspective and obviously planning, you know, sent this on and with a favorable vote, but you mentioned there were potential concerns about traffic flow and onto 1600 and the lane that needed to be built. You just feel comfortable and confident that the, that the developer will accomplish what needs to be accomplished to make that happen?
Yes, yeah. There was some, some sit-down meetings with our city engineer and, and people represented from the administration. And they figured out kind of the, the future right of way width that they would need and where that's taken from on the east and the west side of the street. And the applicant in this concept plan has shown that, that space that would be dedicated to, to that right of way in the future.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll open this up. Oh, go ahead, Counselor Whipple.
Oh, I was just going to ask in light of our recent discussion with the HOAs and private streets and everything, what this right of way would be, if it would be considered an easement, would it be a possible public street in the future?
Okay, so they would be dedicating property on the west side of these two lots for the expansion of 1600 West. The access for the four lots would just be essentially a driveway that's, that's shared. It's, and they'd have to record a deed that says all four lots would share access off that driveway.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open this up for public comment. Anyone in the chamber here to comment on this item? Nobody online? So, we'll bring it back for any discussion by the council. All right. Oh, okay, go ahead.
My name is Jeff Whitlock. Thank you all for
Sorry, what was it, Jeff?
Jeff Whitlock.
Whitlock, okay.
Thanks.
Commonly spelled.
Okay. Actually, more just have a general question about zoning changes like this. Do we, I know we have the general plan, but do we consider like water usage as a, as a potential impact when considering zoning changes for any, any type, any type like this? I'm just curious as a point of
So I can give, basically, we have some guidelines that we have to stick to as far as, you know, how many units we can accommodate per acre based on current water capacity and such. And so we do consider that when looking at things like this. Is that sufficient of an answer or are you looking for something?
Yeah, I don't have a specific concern. I'm more just like the criteria that you consider when you make these sort of votes.
Yeah, for example, on the west side, they've given us kind of like a four units per acre is about what the west side capacity can handle right now.
So it is, and are those capacities in the general plan, is that where?
This is Southwest area plan map is what my smarter, smarter than me counterparts are saying.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate the question. All right, seeing no further questions, we'll go ahead and take a vote on this item. All in favor? It's unanimous in the council chambers. Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Ellsworth?
Yes.
All right, that is unanimous. Let's go back to the item with Keith. Let's see. Item two, we're back to item two. Keith, I have a question, very important. I've never listened, how is, I've never picked up on it. Is it Maury or Maurey?
Yeah.
Maury?
Yeah, Maury.
All right.
Yeah, thank you. More E.
Maury, all right.
But I'm not offended as long as you're not calling me something.
I got you, I got you.
Either way.
All right, so this is a resolution appropriating $75,734 in the Economic Development Division in the General Fund for a Sales Tax Increment Post-Performance Payment to East Bay Shopping Center. We heard this in a work meeting, so we're somewhat familiar, but Keith, take it away and
I'd be happy to. I'm sorry, I was late, you guys were moving quicker than I had planned. I thought I had a minute. So in 2018, we entered into a sales tax reimbursement agreement with the East Bay Shopping Center Group. And basically, the agreement said that if they spent approximately $2,309,000 on improvements, that we would share back with them any increase in tax increment that the city received. And so this is the second year that we have And so this is the second year that we have participated in a reimbursement to them. And this year, based on their performance, they are due back uh, a check from us for $75,734. Um, that's the second payment, and so the total for the two years so far is 114,358. I think the fact that they're doing well and um, are entitled to a portion of that sales tax back is a reflection of why we do these agreements to begin with. I mean, we have several of these and um, all of them were intended to try to improve shopping areas that were struggling a little bit and that needed some improvement. And by partnering with a developer to facilitate them making those improvements, um, we benefit and they benefit. And so this is for a period of time until um, we paid back a portion of their investment. It's no way intended to, to wholly reimburse them. Um, they, if they performed exceptionally well, they would never get more than half of what their total investment was. And usually based on projections, they probably aren't going to get very close to that even. But it is a reflection of our partnership in the community and the uh, commitment, I think that the mayor has expressed that economic vitality is important to our stability. And by us partnering with them, I think it shows our good faith effort to be supportive and to try to make those improvements to keep those centers alive and thriving. So with your acceptance, I'd ask you to make a motion to approve that appropriation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Question, please. So sorry, I might have misheard, but, but says it 2018, an agreement?
That's when we entered into the agreement with them.
So 2018, and then it was a 10 year agreement that started in 2018?
Correct.
Can't go beyond 2020?
I think we actually made the first payment in 2019.
So it does start with that first payment?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we have had one. The Riverwoods actually has not started yet. It should have started last year, but because of the pandemic, they actually asked if we could give them some leeway and not trigger it. Um, we have done a review of theirs for this year, and actually they had not performed well enough to get a reimbursement. So they did not perform above what that baseline was. And so, you know, that's the reality of what could potentially happen. It's not what we would like to have happen. I mean, I think the Riverwoods is doing much better, and I think you'll see that start to change over. But I mean, yes, we do evaluate those very closely.
But, but so the, so off topic, but the Riverwoods, would their, would their 10 year clock start then? Next year, we giving
Yeah, well, it starts, it started this year because we went ahead and reviewed it because we just, we felt like we could justify one year, but I mean, we can't do that in perpetuity because you could have a developer say, well, you know, actually this year's a little bit off. Let's start it next year. And then it kind of goes on forever, which wasn't our intent, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we'll open this uh, item up for public comment. Anyone in the chamber would like to ask, comment about this? Jeff, no questions this time, huh? All right. Watch out, you'll catch the bug and you'll be running for a seat here soon. Okay, anybody online? Okay. We'll close public comment. Any additional discussion? At the council? Okay, then we'll go ahead and we'll vote on this item. All in favor? It's unanimous in the chambers. Councillor Ellsworth?
Yes.
And councillor Handley?
Yes.
That vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maury. Okay, I believe we're on action item, yes, five, okay. An ordinance amending the zone map classification of approximately 1.39 acres of real property from 46 West to 90 West and 800 North. From residential conservation to campus mixed use. And authorizing a related development agreement. Is there a development agreement? Okay, this affects the North Park neighborhood. We might get some comments on this, so if you're online and you want to comment, go ahead and, and call in or sign in. Erin is back to present this again.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so again, we, we looked at this a little bit in, in study session, um, but let me kind of run through uh, the, the proposal here. So the proposal is up on 800 North. There are currently four older homes along that stretch of 800 North. And then uh, behind those to the north is the, the Foxwood Apartments currently. There is a good map of it. Uh, so that's, that's the entire area that is proposed for a zone map amendment uh, to the campus mixed use zone. Uh, this zone is intended to be near or adjacent to campus, uh, which this is in this case. Um, the applicant went through planning commission. Uh, we, we reviewed some of those concerns earlier today in, in study session that the planning commission had regarding the use of the CMU zone. In this location, uh, the use of the CMU zone on all five properties rather than the four. And um, the, the reduction in parking, I think were the three main concerns from the planning commission. Um, and their recommendation to you. Uh, staff feels that this is a ideal location for the campus mixed use zone. It's, it's adjacent to the university. It's adjacent to UVX. Its proximity to uh, amenities and services provides a, a good opportunity for, for campus housing, for student housing. Um, the, the parking reduction requested. Uh, we, we chatted a little bit about that. Um, it's very close to what would be required. Uh, the, the code requirement is 1.5 and the, the concept plan showed a 1.34 and that's spaces per unit. Um, so 62 one bedroom apartments is the concept for that first phase of this plan. If we can scroll down. You can see there's a phase two there. Uh, the phase two would uh, be another 40 apartments. The campus mixed use zone meets the, the general plan for the area. It's, it's slated as residential. Staff is, is recommending that this move forward. With uh, kind of with a condition of um, a development agreement being a part of that, that motion, um, that we've talked to the applicant and he's, he's happy to proffer certain things that came from his concept plan uh, into that development agreement. He could speak more on that, but uh, that's all I have for now unless there's questions for me.
We do have a count, a question from councillor Ellsworth.
Yeah, we might have answered this earlier. Remind me, is there a timeline for phase two?
Yeah, so there's not an, uh, an exact timeline on, there's no hard dates. In our discussions with the applicant, and he can address this as well. They would want to do the phase one, get that built and occupied. Uh, get to a, a good financially stable position to, to go ahead and tear down Foxwood Apartments and do phase two at that point. Um, so there's no, no hard dates, but uh, yeah, hopefully that answers your question.
And are, are you worried at all about um, creating non-conformity with that property?
No, um, if, if you look at the CMU zone to the east where um, there's blocks and blocks of non-conformities or any of the downtown zones, uh, the ITOD zone. The city has a kind of a, a way of, of zoning the properties the way they, we imagine them to be, um, the way the, the, the general plan envisions them to be. Um, so there's going to be non-conformities when you do something like that, when you, when you pre-zone uh, property to, to get the desired development. Um, that's just part of it.
Uh, Mr. Jones?
With regard to the question about phase two, we talked about this a little bit in the work session. You know, I mentioned in the work session that we can't really force completion of phase two. But one thing I would suggest and, and it'd be helpful to get some guidance from the council on this as far as how they feel about this is it's, we probably don't want an open-ended development agreement that lasts potentially forever. So generally we put an end date on these. A lot of times our, our determination date for our development agreements is issuance of this certificate of occupancy. But if phase two never gets built, then that would never occur. So I would suggest there probably ought to be at least some term limitation, whether five years, 10 years. At some point, the development agreement uh, ends even if phase two hasn't been built. Uh, and the main reason for that would be so that the city could do something else uh, as far as rezoning the property or something if, if that's never built.
Councillor Whipple, did you have a question or comment?
Yes, councillor McKay.
Okay, so the CMU we're able to do with both property. Is it normal to zone things that are two different properties together? Like could, could, could like Foxwood be sold and then the other one would be non-conforming and not fit the CMU zone? Or are they one unit that is always going to be one, you know what I mean? Cause I don't, cause I just don't think on, that we keep doing on conforming is okay. Like, I think ideally we should be sticking with our zones and have them make sense and be the way we need them to be to come to fruition and, you know, what we're looking for.
I think, I think I understand the question. When, when a zone, when the zone is applied to a property, I think it, it signals to the city, to the residents, to future developers what we want to see there, right? Um, so it's like that all the way from University Ave to, to 900 East between BYU campus and 700 North. So all through that area, um, it's covered with non-conformities. But the zones there for if somebody wants to grab some of those aged buildings and redevelop them. Uh, I think the case would be the same here. Um, if, if the council grants the CMU zone for both of these properties and the applicant only does phase one. Uh, phase two is still zone CMU. Uh, they're going to be restricted to the regulations of the zone for that specific property if it's sold off. Um, but I think the, the question is, does CMU make sense for this area? And I think it is.
But to be technical, we're not fitting the zones. Like it doesn't really fit CMU.
Right, the, the current Foxwood Apartments don't fit all the regulations for the CMU zone. That's correct.
Um, one thing I do think that's interesting is that we even have the CMU. The name is, the name is misleading, right? Campus mixed use, but we don't require them to have commercial with it. That is an odd thing.
Yeah, I'm, I think there's been a lot of discussion about that. We'd be happy to rename it if, if it continues to be an issue. Um, the, the idea behind that campus mixed use zone was provide opportunities for developers to include a commercial component. In areas where it makes sense, on, on specific nodes within the Joaquin neighborhood, there's, there's some areas that are displayed in the Joaquin neighborhood plan that, that show where staff would imagine those commercial nodes could be. Um, but in no way does it, does it force a developer to include commercial, no.
Well, I have a question if nobody else does. Okay, I gotta take a step back on this. All right, so we got this property. They don't have enough parking. So we're going to switch the zone and include Foxwood so that they can get enough parking. But then also they plan to develop Foxwood down the line. Or was the parking not a, not an issue, not a factor with the Foxwood?
Right, the Foxwood parking doesn't come into it.
Okay. Once, once they do the tentative Foxwood development, if you put both of them together, like in general, do we know about how many spaces per unit we would have with both of them together in the end?
Right, so in the, in the concept plan for phase two, they have that parked to 100% meet code.
Okay.
Um, like I mentioned phase one. They're 10 stalls short, um, where 93 would be required for phase one. They're providing 83 uh, through a TDM proposal. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I, I think one question I have is, I, I kind of got the impression that we were rezoning this so that they could retroactively fit enough, fit enough, uh, or have enough parking or close to enough parking or? No?
No, the, so the Foxwood parking is, is still just going to be for Foxwood. Um, they're not relying on any of that parking for, for the phase one project.
But, but this one is, is, I got the impression we were reasoning it as a CMU because it's like, okay, well, we can't get enough parking in the existing zone. So let's just do CMU and all, now all of a sudden we have enough parking.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't dependent on the parking. Um, there's, there's density maximums um, in the CMU dependent on how much property you have in that zone. Uh, and that had more to do with, with including that and, and kind of their long-term vision for the, the, the properties their family owns.
Okay. And then there was something with um, they had to have a setback in case 800 North gets widened.
Yeah, so you can
So they lost a courtyard.
You can see that secondary line on this, on the site plan, um, that's right in front of the porches. If and when 800 North gets expanded, um, through the, the transportation uh, master plan. That would be the new right away line. Um, so they've they've had to push back their building more than usual to accommodate that. And I think that has come into play with some of their their numbers with their parking and, and number of units.
Let's just stay hypothetical. If they didn't have to push it back, could they have had enough parking?
Yeah, I'm sure they could have.
Okay. My friends in the River Grove neighborhood would like to, me to remind you all that that we did make some changes to the transportation master plan to kind of say that 800 North doesn't necessarily have to be widened. So if you're remiss if I didn't bring that up, it's we, we, we fought a long hard battle on that.
Right.
So Brandon Larson remembers. I don't know where he is, but okay, I think that's my questions. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, we have councillor Handley with a question.
Yes, I'm wondering um, if, and maybe the developer can answer this, but would, do we know what the price, price range of these apartments would be?
Yeah, I would.
And I, and I guess the reason I'm asking that is I'm, I'm curious to know what, what is the degree of confidence that, that the price range meets a market need?
Um, just for some context, we had a discussion on the the general plan, and in the general plan, there was a table that showed that we have the most need for super low end and super high end. You know,
Right.
rental housing, I believe, something like that. But I think that's where this question is coming from is, you know, we have, does it fit the need that we really have right now or not?
Yeah, I get that, but I'll defer to the applicant for that.
So councillor Handley, I think if you heard Erin said he'll defer to the developer to answer that. So maybe we'll have the developer come up in a few minutes.
Okay.
Um, councillor? I don't know who was first, but I'm going to go ahead and say councillor Whipple. Go ahead, because I saw her first. Sorry, councillor Fillmore.
Would it be possible um, just to do the phase one and do the zone change for the CMU for that? And it would be a compliant project with that zone change?
It is possible just to make that rezone change. Uh, it would greatly alter their project. It would, it would heavily reduce the number of units that they uh, could provide.
So in order to put this many units in phase one, they need to include both parcels?
Yes, there's a stipulation in the CMU zone that says if you are developing uh, 40,000 square feet or less, you're held to a maximum of 40 units per acre. If you have more than that, there's no maximum density for the CMU zone. So that, that's the trigger there.
All right, thank you.
All right, Mr. Fillmore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Erin, I think it might be helpful for those who are listening in, you know, for the general public to have you articulate what the objections were of the planning commission and denying their support for this. And the thinking of your department in the city that convinced you to override the planning commission's recommendation.
Sure, yeah, happy to do that. Um, so so first the, the timing of that stuff makes the recommendation and then planning commission sees that and makes their own recommendation. So we didn't essentially override it. We just differ in, in our recommendation. Uh, but the, the planning commission's main issues were they weren't not all of them were 100% comfortable with the parking reduction that was proposed. Uh, they overall weren't comfortable with applying the zone to all of the five of the properties, um, including the Foxwood Apartments was a, a tripping point for them. There was some concern there that they were just using that to get density on these uh, the front four lots. Uh, so there's concern with, with the use of the CMU zone. And then um, there was some concern over not having a commercial component uh, as part of this project, as part of the concept plan. I believe those are, were the main concerns um, from the planning commission. They did like some things. They like, they liked the proximity to transportation. They like the amenities. But those, those concerns kind of overrode uh, the things they liked about it in the recommendation.
Okay, so now please explain how the city staff got over those objections. First, parking and secondly, the possibility that the Foxworth project may never be built.
Sure, uh, so so staff evaluated this before we even took it to planning commission. Uh, we, we thought this was an ideal place for the CMU zone. It just makes sense for the campus mixed use zone to be on this, these parcels. Uh, the parking we saw as not much of a, a deduction. Uh, where. They're just ten spaces short. Uh, rather than having one point five spaces per unit that are one point three four. Uh, all, all of these are either studio or one bedroom apartments. Uh, we felt like with a one point three four parking ratio. That that would meet the needs, especially, um, considering the. The management strategies outlined, uh, by the applicant. And Hales Engineering in the, in the TDM report. We felt comfortable with that, that engineering, that traffic study, the, not the traffic study, the parking justification study. On this application, we felt comfortable with those conclusions. And, uh, overall, felt this was appropriate zone for these properties.
I think this morning you alluded to something in the development agreement that limits automobiles. Is that right? That something contractual between the landlord and the tenants?
That, that would, that would be on the management of the, the parking, uh, and the tenants with the, with the developer. Uh, with the whoever manages the, the building. Um, the, the points on the development agreement that we were most concerned with. Were, uh, what they've proffered as, as far as their concept plan goes, uh, especially in regards to height. Um, the, the CMU zone allows up to seventy-five feet in height, this is showing as forty-five feet in height. Um, so some of those. Those things that have been proffered by the concept plan, we would want wrapped up in development agreement. So when, if the zone gets approved, they can't come back with a project plan that maxes out the zone standards. Um, the, the parking management side of it, the TDM, uh, would have to be approved by the planning commission and that would be recorded on the title of the property. But then it's up to the management to, to work out those details and and enforce that.
And to enforce it, so if they fail to enforce, where does that leave the city?
Uh, well, that, that leaves us with possibly a parking frustration.
That's pretty candid answer. Okay. Uh, I think the other public concern that's been expressed is. If you grant this special concession by adding the Foxworth property into this in order to enable, uh, this development. But for whatever reason, the Foxworth property never gets developed. Then how do you view that consequence?
Well, I think that's the same condition we're in right now, right? So Foxwood is currently existing as is. If it never gets developed, we're status quo, I mean, that's, it's just going to be. We're in the same position we are now.
Except you've granted de facto nonconforming use.
Well, I mean, it wouldn't. It wouldn't be nonconforming, uh, because this, if, if the CMU zone is applied to the entire property, it is in conformance with the zone. But I, I do see what you're saying. It is seem, it would seem like a kind of a bait and switch. And I understand that point.
I think we're going to give the developer a chance to respond to these things, so.
Right.
Thank you for your perspective.
Thank you.
I have, I have one more question.
Yeah, I was just about to call your name, councillor Ellsworth, go for it.
Thanks. Does, does anyone know what year Foxwood apartment building was built?
Nineteen seventy-two.
Nineteen seventy-two, so it's fifty years old. Um, which for apartment buildings is fairly young. Just thinking, they probably won't tear it down anytime soon. That's all, thanks.
You got us thinking, thank you. Um. Any other questions for Mr. Armour? Uh, okay, so. Cliff, do we typically allow, or pepper the developer with questions first or go to public comment first?
As I say, usually you let the developer, if the developer has a presentation to make, usually go with that first and and ask them questions. And then open it up to pop the public comment, often, uh, allowing a neighborhood chair to speak first if there's one present.
Yeah, okay, so. Um. Thank you. Uh, council members for great questions, I guess we'll. Uh, give some time to the developer, uh, to come on up. Um. All right, I was just gonna ask if you got a presentation.
I do.
Are you Mr. Metler?
I'm Tim Metler, yes.
Tim Metler, okay, nice to meet you, thanks for joining us today.
Thank you. I'm a clicker, do I just push the right button to advance?
Yeah, and Mr. Metler typically would give you about five minutes, do you need more than that, you think, or?
No, I think I can get it.
Okay.
Okay. So on the eight hundred North project, just my background is, we've had the, the Foxwood apartments since the early nineteen seventies. I've been managing since nineteen ninety-seven. Currently with Legend Real Estate, we've got three hundred units under management and about a thousand plus tenants. So I think we've got pretty good background on the property management and and rental situation. A couple of considerations, I think the primary considerations for the council are, one. Is this an appropriate use of the land? And two, is this an appropriate use, um, zoning for this piece of land here? Um, just to show you, these are the houses that are there currently that we're looking at tearing down. Um, so they're old houses, there's no historical value there and they're hitting towards the end of their useful life. This is the Foxwood apartments that are currently there. It's well maintained, but still again, it was built in the early nineteen seventies. And there's already been some discussion among the family as to tearing that down. Um, the surrounding neighborhood, when you take a look at like, is this, is the, the use of this, is it appropriate for the neighborhood? This is to the south, there's apartment complex to the south, looking to the west, there's another, another family housing. And you've got what used to be campus, uh, or the villa apartments there. Um, Freedom on Ninth or Second or whatever, um, to the north, you've got several projects there. And then you look to the east, you've also got several projects looking to the east. So my feeling is, as far as, you know, high density, multifamily, you know, residential housing. I feel like the intended use and the zoning is consistent with what's built in the area there. This is the project that's proposed for that property as far as an elevation goes. When you look at the floor plans here, again, as Aaron said, they're single, you know, they're a studio. Or a single bedroom type unit, and one of the questions that was asked is, is this going to be affordable housing? The intended use on this is because of the proximity to BYU. We plan on renting this to, you know, basically married or couples students. You basically have mostly two occupants there. Um, Hales Engineering that did the transportation study, um, pointed out three things, one, when is it a TDM applicable? The proximity to compliment complimentary land uses, proximity to public transportation services. And then also onsite bicycle and storage amenities that was facilitating this TDM. In, in our opinion, we feel like this TDM is ideally positioned for here in Provo City, I mean, if not here, where? And I know that we approved a TDM down in South Provo on South State Street. But I mean, really in proximity to, to amenities and and land uses, this fits really well. I mean, proximity to amenities, we've got just near there, a block and a half is the bus stop. For the UTA, for the UVX, you've got Smith's, which is four blocks away. Uh, the Provo City Rec Center, three blocks away, and then several parks, um, right next door. As far as the amenities on this project, we're looking at additional storage lockers and bicycle lockers. To try to promote people and their, you know, alternative methods of transportation. And then it knows some other amenities here as far as clubhouse and things like that that are being provided, which is one of those things. That are taken into consideration when a TDM is granted. We manage this complex here, we've managed it for twenty-five years. This is College Park, it's a block and a half south of where this project is proposed. Um, there's fifty-one units there and Hales Engineering found that during the peak demand. It's one point one two cars. Um, the parking requirements, if it was at full parking capacity and full parking provided. Um, would require the zoning under CMU would require one point five, um, stalls per unit. We're only proposing one point three four, so a point one six reduction. And again, the neighboring property that's only a block and a half at peak, Hales Engineering found a one point one two. Um, parking there. Um, so again, the proposed reduction is from ninety-three to eighty-three stalls. Um, a park, as far as a parking management plan, our plan is to screen applicants. And, you know, there's room for, for people to have two cars there, but once that's full, we would only take applicants that have one car. Um, and, and you know, in the manager or the development agreement, we would agree, um, not to rent applicants with more cars. Than what is available on the, the proposed site there. Um, we are agreeable to in a development agreement, would work with staff on that. Um, we're agreeable to that, the Foxwood phase, phase two, when it comes down to limiting that to forty units and a height restriction. I put in fifty feet in there, just some leeway. Um, as, as Aaron mentioned, the current project is proposed at forty-five feet. And again, just kind of to close this out, um, three points here, one, we feel like the intended use in the zone. Given the surrounding neighborhood is appropriate for this area. Two, when we take a look at the general plan, the general plan kind of specifies that the, the city is looking for. Um, more new affordable, high density, you know, housing for the general plan. And three, we really feel like i- if not where, I mean, if not here, where else in the city are we going to apply the TDM? Um, when you take into consideration the proximity of the amenities and also the amenities on site. And we just feel like most, you know, most individuals that will be living there would probably be attending the university. And BYU is only two blocks away, so it's within walking distance there as well. So anyway, we'd request approval, but, uh, thank you for your time and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, um, I'll, I'll go ahead and just jump in and ask Mr. Hand, uh, councillor Handley's question. What is the, what's your business plan say as far as price, price point for renting these units?
We'd like to try to hit nine hundred, but we'd like for sure want to stay under a thousand per, per unit.
Okay, so nine hundred to a thousand, two people probably in a unit or?
Well, that, yeah, I mean, the neighboring complex, we basically have married couples and usually if they have a baby. You know, they're out of there because it's a one bedroom unit.
Right.
So we're really trying to look at affordable housing.
Okay, I guess I'll let Mr. Handley or councillor Handley ask any additional questions, he's got to follow up to that.
No, that's fine, thanks.
I'm curious, Mr., councillor Handley, does, do you think that fits in one of those two areas where we had the most demand?
Well, it's kind of right on the cusp, if it were, uh, it seems like, uh. It was below, uh, it was closer to six hundred or seven hundred, which is the lowest range that we need. Um. I'm just, yeah, I, I don't know, maybe I will follow up with a question, I'm curious to know what the market analysis indicates. Is the reason to believe that we need more of, uh, this kind of housing for, for. Um, married students?
As I said, we manage the College Park Apartments, we're only a block and a half away. And those units, which is a one bedroom unit. When we, we have approximately fifty to sixty percent renewal rate there. And we do open it up for new housing, it's gone within thirty days.
Uh, let me, I just want to see if Mr. Hand, if councillor Handley, if that answers his questions, if he has any more. Regarding that.
No, that's fine, thanks, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, councillor McKay.
Um, if this will help, George, I, I believe it was when I met with, um, Wayne Parker. That he mentioned that married student housing, there was a big hole in the city for married student housing. So my understanding is that we have a shortage of married student housing.
So would you classify this as married student?
I, I would agree with that, I mean, a- again, those units that are right next to there, I mean, if we have one unit come open mid-year. We have six or seven applicants within three days. Looking for that, so, I mean, in our opinion, we see the demand there.
Councillor Fillmore.
Very nice presentation.
Oh, thank you.
Is your mic on?
Yeah, it is.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, I was trying to hit the five minute deadline, so I kind of blew through that, but I didn't want to waste your time. If there's anything you'd like me to go back to, I could do that.
No, you're good, I, that was very nice to see the presentation, very informative, thank you. Uh, I think it's an appropriate development in the area, very nice design, I think it's a good fit. The issue for us is all too, all too often parking. Uh, too many landlords to the east of you. Uh, South Campus have played some games with parking and you're probably well aware of what games can be played. And so we, we end up with the situation where people are scrambling for on-street parking and all that kind of stuff. Um, and so if you have a married couple. And apparently they're going to sign an agreement with you saying they'll just do one car, is that it? Or, or that's just part of your screening?
Yeah, so if there's sixty-two units and eighty-three stalls, that means there are additional twenty-one stalls. So we could have out of that mix, twenty-one. You know, occupants in the units could allow for them to have two cars. So beyond that, we would just require the applicants have only one car.
So they commit to one car when they apply and a year later they buy a second car.
Well, again, we try to encourage, I, I mean, our goal is to encourage these alternative methods of transportation. And I, I feel like that, given the proximity to UVX, BYU. And just based upon my knowledge of what's going on in the neighboring complex, again, I mean. The, the type of people that are, the type of people that'd be interested in this project, because you're talking about a one bedroom and a studio unit. And if they're going to school, generally speaking, they're on a restricted budget. And so many of them do not have a two-car situation. So I, I, I feel like it's a good fit for this.
I think you're making good assumptions, you know, the UVX proximity, the proximity to, to the university. Uh, just, we never know entirely and. We also have the problem that these people have guests who come their way. They're looking for a parking and it just puts us in a little bit of a twilight zone in terms of guest work, you know what I'm saying? And we just, we've had too much of that south of campus. But thank you very much for a fine presentation.
Oh, thank you.
It's like a great project, nice design.
Councillor Whipple.
Have you considered setting up the rental contracts such that if somebody violates their parking requirement, that would be grounds for termination and eviction?
We certainly could do that. I hadn't thought of that, but we certainly could put that in the development agreement and do that.
That, that would be helpful. What about, uh, how committed are you to phase two?
Well, I have one brother, you might know my brother Jeff, he would have torn it down five years ago if we let him. So it's already been on the table as a discussion. But a- as Aaron said, because Aaron asked me about that and I said. We've generally been a pretty conservative family. And we have developed kitty corner of this block, the Foxwood condos. Um, and feel like we were pretty responsible in how we developed that. And in fact, there's a hundred percent parking over there for all tenants. Um, so we did what we felt was right there. Um, but the plan is to get, I mean, the construction market's all over the place right now. We want to make sure that we build this at the right time and that we get it up and it's financially operating well before we go to phase two. And that's been the overriding discussion.
Yeah.
But there, as I said, there's been discussion with Jeff would rather tear it down sooner and later and a couple others are kind of along the same agreement.
In the, in the contemplated development agreement, has that been drafted, by the way? Or is it just conceptual right now?
That, that was drawn as, the architects here is just, he drew it as concept of what would fit there. And making sure that it was applicable and and fit the CMU zone and kind of the height. I, I think it'd be egregious to try to put a seventy-five foot building there. So that's not what we're proposing, we want to be responsible neighbors, we've been in that neighborhood a long time.
So I guess my question is, in the contemplated development agreement, what, what is the level or nature of the commitment with respect to phase two? Is it just totally open ended?
We're, we're committed to doing that and I liked the comment earlier of saying, well, there maybe ought to be an end date to that development agreement. And I think, you know, something out around ten years, I think, would be a great date to put there. So that development happens or the city can rezone it, you know, to a different use.
Yeah.
Um, there was some question about, you know, whether this zone is appropriate for that area. But if you, if you go straight across, if you go one block east. But if you, if you go straight across, if you go one block east, all that property there has been, you know, zoned CMU, and when that was, you know, city-planted as CMU zoning, every, the majority of the housing in there became non-conforming. And so I, I don't feel like applying a non-conforming use to the Foxwood apartments that are already there is inappropriate. I think it's still appropriate, and I think it's just saying, here's how we would like to use, that we intend this property to be developed in the future, which is certainly consistent with our ideas of how we do want to develop that property as a family group.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Counselor McKay?
I definitely thought way too much about this, but, um, I love your presentation, thank you. I love that you guys are a family business, I love it that you're local landlords, I love it that you keep your places nice and well-kept, and, you know, great neighbors. Um, I've decide, I've decided that my, the density is great, I believe the density is appropriate where it's at. Do you, my only issue is the parking, and, and the issue is, and it's not even your fault per se, I believe that people will use their cars way less. I love your bike walkers, um, I love that you're so, I mean, your proximity to the UVX, everything. People will use their cars way less, but it just doesn't take away from the fact that they're going to want cars. Um, and I believe they will have cars, possibly two per unit. Um, and the main thing is the feedback I keep getting from local, from neighbors in that area, saying that they're concerned about the parking, and there's already such a parking issue. And I just don't want to add to that, and part of it is the fault of previous developments, right? And previous situations that have caused this. Um, so I guess my hangup is just having a hard time adding to that. Like, I, I would even, not even care if you went up to get those other few parking spots. For, is it, is it one floor, like, half parking, half units? And then put the other units on top and have like a balcony on top with the other half or something? I don't know, you know what I mean, just some ideas.
I guess what I'd say is, I, I don't, as far as I understand how this sits before the city council, is that there's not a stamp of approval necessarily on the concept plan.
Okay.
But we're here to get the zone approved, and whether or not this is an appropriate, you know, is the correct use for this area, and like I said, when you look at the surrounding area, to me it appears to be, and the correct application was zoning the area. So we may need to go back and look, but I, I still rely on the transportation study that was done by Hales Engineering, say that we're, we're exceeding what peak use they noted at the nearby complex. So I guess for that reason, I would request, you know, approval of the zone, but maybe we need to, to further look at the concept there.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and, um, thank you, Mr. Melo, we'll go ahead and open this up for public comment. I do want to ask, um, I think Eric Chase, Neighborhood Chair from the area, is here, if he wants to come up and, and, um, provide some comment to us, thank you.
Hi, I'm Eric Chase, I'm the Neighborhood Chair for the North Park Neighborhood. Um, is this project exactly what I would do if I was building a big thing there? No, I would make a few small changes, you know, I might maybe throw in some two-bedroom units, or maybe, uh, put in some retail or something, but it's, I think what the, the proposal we have now is a good proposal that will benefit the neighborhood. Um, this is a very, it's a very high turnover area. There's, there's hardly any permanent residents in these couple blocks here between, uh, the hospital and BYU. Um, I think this, I personally would have no problem with the CMU zone being maxed out, like someone said. Uh, there are other properties in the vicinity that are more analogous to that. Um, I, we, I know, they said they don't want to, and they want to keep it under fifty feet, but it's just like three blocks from the hospital, that's over three hundred, over two hundred feet tall. And there's other, these other, uh, CMU zones around that are, uh, you know, seventy-five feet, closer to seventy-five feet tall. Um, but I think, um, I think in land use, um, we're good at thinking about positives and negatives of the current situation and of the proposed situation, um, except for thinking about the, the negatives we have of the current situation. Um, with these hundred and twenty-five, yeah, sixty-two units, so about a hundred and twenty-five people, um, if this kind of higher-density project is not built there, uh, those hundred and twenty-five people are going to live somewhere else, and that's going to require them to drive into campus and put more pressure on, uh, parking in the walking neighborhood and, and more pressure on widening the roads. Um, and I think that has a bigger long-term negative impact than, than maybe, um, a parking crunch might have before people realize there's not as much on-street parking here, and it's not a good option if your family has three cars. Um, I think the, um, the city's decision to keep going forward as they're expanding Eight Hundred North is already having a negative impact on this. Uh, the original project that the developer brought forth, I liked more than what they've come up with after having to squeeze it down into the smaller footprint that the city has required. And I think building more towards the, the higher-density, uh, sustainable-type projects, especially in the central core of the city, close to transit, close to the current UVX line, close to the, the other UVX line or BRT line that's going to be on Five Hundred West, just a few blocks away, um, in sometime in the future. I think the more, uh, higher-density housing, um, even with less parking, will be of a greater benefit to the community and to the, to the city.
Eric, I think, Counselor McKay, you wanted to ask him a question?
Sure.
Um, so you're not worried about the parking?
No.
And have you, have you gotten any negative feedback from the neighborhood about the parking?
Um, like I said, there's, there's no permanent residents in this part of, in these couple blocks, uh, between Freedom and University Avenue, they're all, almost, almost all students. I don't want to say there's none, but, but there's almost, uh, they're almost all students. And they're, you know, it probably will be hard to find an on-street parking space in, in this area, but I think people, people will change their behavior if they recognize it, because what are their other options, are they going to park on the street three blocks away? Uh, are they going to, you know, the, people will learn to adapt and react to the scarcity of parking.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for the Neighborhood Chair.
Go ahead.
One of the comments in the report, uh, under Neighborhood Issues is a loss of historic character. And these homes are, they do have historic character, and they are, I mean, from what I've seen, they're tidy, they're well-taken care of, and they're single-family detached homes. Um, I guess for me, that's a loss if they're torn down. I also think that it reduces the, the likelihood that there could be some longevity in, uh, in ownership or in a renter who wants to stay there for, for a couple of years. Um, is that a concern at all for you or for neighbors? The lack of, uh, or the deterioration of historic character and/or the loss of single-family detached opportunities in this immediate area?
Um, I think we, we do need more, um, more of this style of home in the city. Um, I think it's worth noting that I don't think these kinds of homes could be built anywhere in the city now with the current zoning. So I think if we really valued smaller homes on smaller footprints and not required, uh, parking garages, we would allow them to be built somewhere else. And they are, I think they're probably all about a hundred years old, these houses, and I think this is just part of being in an evolving and adapting city that will, will lose some older houses like this, and hopefully we can replace it with things that are better.
Thanks.
Any just questions for Mr. Chase? Okay, thank you. All right, now we'll open it up for public comment, so anyone who would like to comment, uh, from the public, um, we'll start with anyone in the chamber. Come on up, glad to see you again.
Uh, so I just bought a house on, well, actually, go ahead and state your name again. My name's Jeff Whitlock. Uh, so I bought a house on, we live on, uh, One Hundred West and Three Hundred North, um, those, that kind of townhouse development right opposite Smith's. So I drive honestly past this location every single day. I want to state first upfront that like, I actually a hundred percent agree, we need more married housing, we need affordable married, married housing, it's obviously a big need, as I'm thirty-three years old, I have a lot, I have seven younger brothers and sisters, and they're all fighting to get into places, and we have friends who are just trying to find, so I a hundred percent agree. Um, I think kind of, but I do want to give some data, just because I pass this area every day, there is never parking on the street there. In fact, just yesterday when I drove there, there was a car parked in that red, there's like a red lane where you're not supposed to park because it makes the corner blind, you can't see as you're trying to cross Eight Hundred, and there's a car parked there, and I couldn't go, I was like, I don't know if it's safe to go, so I inched out. And so there's just never parking around that area, like, we go to church at that, at that, uh, church building there. So I am really concerned about the housing, about the parking, I would question a little bit. Great presentation, I would question the assumption that there's not going to be two, it's two cars per house. I mean, if it's married housing, and they're about a thousand dollars a month, that probably suggests economic means to have two cars. I, I know very few married, I mean, obviously, they have different data from that other, uh, the other unit, but I would question, is, like, what's the price point of that other unit? Is it actually like a slightly lower, um, economic demographic, so they have fewer cars? But that's just one thing I would look at, is just question that sort of assumption of one-point-three cars per apartment, I would, I, it intuitively feels off, given the price point, but again, could be wrong there. Um, and then the last question that I just have, it would be like, if you change the zoning, does the council have the authority to enforce some of these kind of like conditionals that we've been discussing? Like, making sure that they don't have three cars per unit? Or you guys talked about a lot of potential conditionals, but if you change the zoning, do you then have a secondary round of approvals? I actually don't know the process, and then also what, what can, what ability you have to enforce on Foxwood? Are you sort of giving like a free pass on the Foxwood to anything they want to do? And I, again, just a point of question there.
Thank you, Jeff, appreciate it. Great questions. Um, go ahead, come on up.
Um, my name is Zeke Peters, I'm actually here for a different item, but listening in, I decided I should probably comment as a young married student, um, who just is trying to sell their apartment currently. Um, but I, first off, I think this is a great project for the area, um, it's very close to campus. My wife and I personally have one car, which I know is not as common as, I know plenty of married couples who have two, three cars. But I think the issue is, I live further away from campus, and the only reason that we had to do that is because we spent three and a half months trying to find an apartment that had an opening. We were married in March, so that was kind of our own fault for not being married at the natural break that happens here in Provo, April and August and December. However, I've already had, I haven't even posted my apartment yet for May first, and I have had thirteen couples reach out to me, begging me for them to let them sign the contract. Nine hundred dollars for a one-bedroom in Provo that's brand-new is a great deal. Based off, my landlord just raised my rent forty-five dollars because inflation, she gave no other reason last year. She owns plenty of other properties, and parking is great where I'm at, because I live in the Dixon neighborhood, so I'm pretty far from where all the high, high-density. However, I want to make it a, a point too, that high-density is not a sufficient cause for more parking and more traffic. It has to be mixed in with improper transportation networks, with not enough other options. And I think to answer the question, if not here, then where? I think this is a great location because of its location to the UVX, it's close to campus, and there are so many other married housing. I, I actually fought for an apartment across the street from there, but if I know now that there's going to be brand-new development that's affordable to me, I mean, nine hundred dollars a month, yeah, you might need to be a bit more wealthy, but my wife and I were paying nine oh five for a one-bedroom, and I'm, I mean, I work fifty hours a week, and I'm a full-time student, and so nine hundred is expensive, but it's not impossible. And so I just want to kind of give my input as a married student in the area for that, thank you.
Thank you, Zeke. Oh, all right, looks like we've got a comment from an attendee online. Um, ending in eight, five, two, six, go ahead. They might need some help on muting, how do I, what do they do to unmute, Cliff?
Uh, star six.
You want to hit star six to unmute?
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Perfect, okay, my name is Chris West, I live in the foothills. I am also a, um, a married student at BYU, and I want to rea- reiterate a lot of the same points that, um, the last public commenter gave. Um, there is really, a really short supply of housing, and we've tried to help, um, friends find housing, and like, whenever anyone in our ward moves out and they say we're selling, they're selling their contract, there's immediately like ten different people just from our ward that are responding to that in like the first twenty minutes. There really is short supply, and I think that the parking issue, kind of similar to what the last public commenter said, it's, the high-density will not necessarily, I don't think it'll necessarily lead to higher traffic, and I don't think that the parking will be in, as huge an issue as people are thinking it will be. It isn't a, it's in a place where if people choose and they want to live in that place, they likely want to use other means of transport. If they want to have two cars, there are other places in Provo where they can. In the foothills, there's lots of parking, and so if you want to have two cars here, it's easy to do, and there are people in our ward who have two cars, my wife and I, we only have one car. And I really think that that parking issue is being stressed too much, and it's going to hurt the ability of this development to provide the housing it could. Um, so I want to express support for it, and I, I want to express support for the way that the developer has handled, um, the, the parking issue, I think he gave some really good data about how at the other complex that he manages that's close to there, the parking demand is less than the supply that they're providing at this new development on Eight Hundred. Um, yeah, and that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else in the chamber? Uh, let's wait, and we'll close public comment, and then we'll see if any of the council members have some questions for you, you might get a chance to come up, come back up. Um, okay, we'll go ahead and we'll close public comment, and it looks like, uh, we'll bring it back to discussion among the council, and it looks like, uh, Counselor Handley has his hand up.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, um, just a couple of general comments in response to this helpful discussion and presentations. I, I like this project, I like its location, I think the RC zone in certain parts of downtown, um, has actually prevented us from being able to create higher-density housing options in places that are highly appropriate, uh, for them, and this would be an excellent example because of its proximity to everything that has been mentioned. Um, and I think that's exactly the reason why you would want to actually pinch a little bit on the parking. Um, it's not a big pinch, uh, it's, it's a relatively modest pinch, but if, honestly, if we don't try to restrict parking around places like this, then where are we going to do it? Um, you know, there, there seems to be, and, uh, I think we need to recognize that there's a, 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 a parallel risk of creating too much parking and creating, um, which is extraordinarily expensive, it's a use of, um, real estate and so on, and it, and encourages, rather than discourages, uh, vehicular traffic, which I think we're, we're needing to reduce in the city. So if there is a place and an opportunity to do some sort of modest conservation of, of parking, it would be in a, in a location like this, so I think, I think this is ideal. I mean, I think the, the issue really boils down to enforceability, which it seems to me could be solved relatively easily. Counselor Whipple mentioned one, one method, um, it seems to me that if there's, um, you know, uh, a, a permit that is given for the one car, and if someone gets a second one, they don't have a parking and if someone gets a second one, they don't have a parking spot for it. That's, that's a big problem. But it, it seems like we've got models elsewhere in the city of, you know, capping, capping the parking in reasonable ways like we did with the Amanda Knight Building, which has a similar ideal location for being able to reduce the parking. So, and, and that was, as I recall, a much more aggressive reduction than this is. This seems to be pretty modest. So as long as that's enforceable, I'm comfortable supporting this.
Mr. Jones?
I just wanted to make a comment about, and I think this goes maybe to what the developer was saying a few minutes ago, that about TDMs, about transportation demand management plans and the way that our city code is set up with regard to those. We've spent a lot of time talking about the request for the reduction in parking, but the request for the reduction in parking is not actually part of the rezone in a technical sense. Now, obviously, the council can consider anything they want to consider in determining whether they think a rezone is appropriate at this time. But the way those, that works in our code is the council's actually delegated to the planning commission the authority and the ability to reduce parking based on set criteria. But in doing so, they actually have to require a transportation demand management plan and an agreement which is actually binding and runs with the land and forces the, the developer to come up with the required parking if they violate the terms of the TDM. So to that, to, to the extent that that's the case, let me put it this way. I think to the extent that, that if the council were to end up deciding today that they don't want to do the rezone because the planning commission might approve the TDM when it actually comes in front of them, the question I'm raising is, if that's the case, the council probably needs to seriously think about whether they want to continue to give the planning commission that power or not. And, and maybe the TDM ordinance needs to be changed if, if the entire decision about the, about the rezone is hinging on, on that authority that you've already granted the planning commission. So I just wanted to raise that and say that in, in many ways, that really is a separate issue and a separate issue that's already addressed for by statute. But if it's controlling your decision about the rezone, then we may need to address that separate issue.
Yeah, but in this case, the planning commission denied it. So, I mean, I, I get your argument, but I'm saying, well, then, okay, then we should say no, right?
Well, no, no, no. Well, let me address that. That's a good point, too. They denied the concept plan. They recommended denial of the rezone. But let me clarify one issue because, and this may, that, this may not apply in this particular case, but just so the question, in case the question comes up later, I'd make two comments about that. One, council, council fairly routinely reverses planning commission recommendations. They're an advisory body and, and it's the councils, the buck stops with the council. You're the deciders, right? So it's not uncommon for them to recommend approval and you to deny or vice versa. Having said that, with regard to this issue about the development agreement, the planning commission is actually trained by me to recommend denial if they have concerns, even if those concerns could be remedied by use of a development agreement. Because what, what we've asked them not to do is recommend approval if there's a development agreement because development agreements are supposed to be voluntary and supposed to be proffered voluntarily by the, by the developer. So what we've asked planning commission to do, if they have specific concerns, is to recommend denial, but then list their concerns. And then what we've tried, what we've attempted to, and we probably need to, all of the conversation we're having today reminds me, we probably need to do the development agreement training again for the council now that we've had some turnover. But what we've tried to train, train the council to do is when you see that, that's, it's not necessarily code, but that's a signal to you that if you think a development agreement overturn, overcomes the concerns that the planning commission identified, then you're not really going against their wishes if you approve it with the development agreement because you've addressed what their concerns were. And again, that may, I don't know that the development agreement proffered in this case addresses everything that the planning commission talked about. So that may not be completely applicable in this situation. But I just wanted to make that converse, that comment about the previous discussion about their recommendation. But in this particular case, I guess, if you're saying that the planning commission didn't approve the TDM, then in that case, when you're thinking about the rezone, you should think about the rezone as requiring 1.5 spaces. Because it does require 1.5 spaces unless the planning commission goes back and approves the TDM. Does that make sense? Bill or Aaron, do you want to correct anything I said? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just in an attempt to bring this to a head, I'll express my approval of the development. I think it's a good project. It's well-designed, well situated. With those caveats we've just been talking about, TDM management agreement, that where apparently the developer is willing to contractually commit his tenants to only one car. And I like the 10-year sunset proviso that Brian suggested. So I'll make that motion, we approve it on those conditions.
Mr. Jones, any concerns with that type of motion with those conditions?
Well, let me understand. So the, the implied motion that's in front of you actually already contemplates a development agreement and it contemplates a development agreement in, in keeping with the proffer of the representatives of the developer made in the meeting today. So I guess my question, Counselor Fillmore, would be, is your motion, and, and one of the things he even mentioned was having the, having the sunset provision. So I think that's already included in his proffer. So is there something beyond what he said that you're asking for? Or are you essentially making a motion that's the same as the implied motion? That was, that's-
I understand, we're approving a zoning amendment here, but it's a spot zone. So I assume we could put conditions on it. And so my, my thought is that we approve the zone. If you're saying that we have a dual proffer here, the 10-year sunset and the contractual commitment on auto limitations, I guess we're good.
I guess we may need some clarification from the developer. The limitation, oh, you're saying by limitation on, on autos, you're talking about what they've, what they've indicated with regard to putting that in their contracts and, and not allowing, yeah, I, my understanding would be all, that that's already been proffered and that would all be in the development agreement that, that we would end up drafting after this meeting, unless the developer wants to clarify any of that. Okay.
Well, I guess I want some clarity. So are you looking to limit one car per unit? Because the way I see it is you've got 1.3 for, so what, what exactly would, are, are you proffering that you would limit as far as contractually in your, in your contracts with, with your tenants as far as parking?
So this is what I'd say is, we would rent out to a tenant up to a maximum of two stalls. And once the two stalls are gone, then they only, if we had any remaining spots to fill, it would be only to tenants that have one car.
Another way of putting that, at least the way I interpreted that, is that you're going to end up building either 83 or 93 parking stalls, depending on whether you get the TDM from the planning commission or not. And you're covenanting in the, in the, in the development agreement to not rent, to, to make sure that whoever you rent to don't have more cars than 83 or 93 cars, depending on-
That's correct, yeah.
All right, so basically, you're gonna, you're gonna allow for 83 parking passes? And once you hit those 83, nothing beyond that?
That's correct.
How do we?
Well, that, that, that's a good question because here, here's the, here's the rub is that, like I mentioned earlier in the meeting, usually we, we terminate our development agreements with the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. In this particular case, that probably means certificate of occupancy for phase two. So we can probably enforce their violation of the, of what they just said until phase two is built, but probably not afterwards based on the development agreement itself. But if they have applied for a transportation demand management plan and filed that, and approved by it with the planning commission, and that agreement has been executed, that agreement lasts forever and we can enforce under that agreement.
Can we dictate to the planning commission that they? Sorry, we're going further down the rabbit hole here, but I just don't want us to put something on paper that means nothing ultimately.
Well, so, but again, we, we come back to this issue of that either they're going to build 93 spaces because they don't have a TDM or they're going to build 83 with a TDM that requires them to have enough spaces for their units.
Counselor Whipple?
So I'm imagining the listings for these apartments where you would say one-bedroom apartment with two parking spots or one-bedroom apartment with one parking spot available. Is that kind of how it would go?
Well, since we can change our advertising quickly, we would just advertise it. I mean, when we advertise, we don't generally advertise how many parking spots, frankly. Okay, so what we'd do is, as part of the application, we would ask how many cars they have. And so if we hit a point where all of the, you know, the additional stalls are gone, then we would only take applicants with one car. And we're, believe me, I just had to do a whole bunch of fair housing training because of the whole change in BYU and all that. And screening applicants based upon one car is not a discriminatory issue under the fair housing. So we can discriminate based upon the number of cars.
Counselor Ellsworth? You had your hand up.
Well, yeah, I did have my hand up. I, I think Brian answered this. I'm just concerned about how it would be enforced, right? Because no one is going to pay attention in four years from now or if there's different management about how parking is enforced. Or, or somebody down the line, not me, is going to hear these complaints about parking in the area. And, and we won't have the capacity, I think, or possibly the legal tools to enforce this. So that's, that's just what I'm grappling with.
I thought the attorney had a good, I, you know, a good suggestion there that if the TDM's approved, attach it clear through phase two, therefore it's enforceable.
Yeah, and like I said, the TDM itself is going to be, is going to run even after-
Should be enforceable all the way through. So even if we built 93 stalls, I mean, we'd still have to do the same thing, frankly. Whether it's 93 or 83, but we just feel like that the study done by Hales Engineering is a valid study and they felt like the application of the TDM here was appropriate. And by the way, I just want to add real quick, I appreciate the comments of the younger people that, that chimed in tonight. And I don't know a single one of them. So it wasn't like we got them to call in. So I just wanted to clarify that. But I, and the only person I do know, the comment is Eric Chase, and he and I have only conversed over email. So I appreciate his comments as neighborhood chair as well on the appropriateness of the project.
Yeah, Mr. Shipley, or Counselor Shipley, go ahead.
Sorry, just, just want to follow up with Mr. Jones on something. So we, we're kind of alluding to the fact that these TDMs are these, these, you know, when we zone something with certain parking, that somehow we enforce that. And, and I, I don't think that anybody's enforcing anybody on how many stalls they have. You know, once it's built, right? I mean, we don't care if they, they could rent to somebody with five cars and they don't have enough parking stalls. And we're not saying, oh, you as a landlord are in trouble because of that. There's, there's no like enforcement of that on landlords right now going on. I mean-
That's exactly why we came up with the TDM methodology and a recorded document that is enforceable. Ms. Ellsworth's comment was true until we came up with this new solution. What happens is we get complaints. When Joaquin Village opened, we started to get the complaints right away. We went and talked to the management office and they admitted they had 30 to 50 students with cars waiting to get an onsite spot. But with the TDM being recorded and that being enforceable, we can go after that. It's a new tool in the box.
So the TDM is not just specifying a reduction amount, it's also specifying that you can't sell more cars than you have spots off-street.
Or if you're going to do that, you have to now provide those spaces onsite. So where are you going to put those spaces onsite? That's right.
Yeah, that's a good clarification because I, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, technically, the, now, this requires a great deal of political will. So I don't want to minimize Counselor Ellsworth's point about the fact that this would require political will. But technically, the TDM is a robust enough tool that you could force them to tear down units to build parking if they are violating the terms of the agreement. They, under the terms of the agreement, if the, if the numbers that they have used to justify the reduction are not borne out, they must provide more parking. Now, we have to enforce that. We've got to, you know, take the time to investigate it and file it in court and et cetera, et cetera. But we have the tool, which is, you know, at least half of the, of the concern that Counselor-
And the TDM itself is a relatively new tool.
Yes.
So these existing apartment complexes all over the city, I mean, it's safe to assume they don't have anything contractually that the city could-
I think we put these in last year or maybe, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
2019, I think, right?
Mr. Fillmore?
I can second that.
All right.
What was said, I, I couldn't hear-
So we have a motion that was seconded. I guess, can we get the motion repeated?
I don't know if there was anybody. I'm hesitant to do that because I'm actually still not sure how the motion differs from the implied motion. I think that I've, yeah, I, I, as I understood it, the motion was to approve, well, let me back up again because the implied motion on the table is to approve the, approve the rezone and authorize the negotiation and execution of a development agreement that complies with the proffers made in this meeting and making the, the effective date of the rezone contiguous with the execution of that development agreement. And I think that what I heard in the, when I asked my previous question is that the, the issues that you were concerned about were included in the proffer, such as the sunset provision and the contractual requirements that they're going to have in parking.
And seconded by Counselor Shipley. I guess the question I have is, so the, the, the development agreement has already been proffered?
Well, we don't have a, we don't have a copy in hand and we usually don't. So sometimes that happens. Usually what happens is you pass this version of the ordinance that's in front of you that authorizes the mayor to negotiate and execute an agreement. What usually happens then is planning staff gives the developer a template that we have. And they, and, and either fills out some things that planning staff wants to make sure is in there where the developers start, anyway, it gets exchanged back and forth between the developer and planning staff until planning staff at least is satisfied that it meets the requirements of what was said in this meeting. They send it to me, I review it for the same thing, and then they get sent to the mayor for, for signing. That's the, that's the normal process. There have been times in the past when the development agreement was, the terms, the proposed terms of the development agreement were gnarly enough that the council said, let's just continue this. And you guys go draft the development agreement and bring the ordinance back to us when we can actually look at the agreement. But that's been fairly rare.
That's what I was going to say to do, but all right.
And I'm okay with that. I, I just said it's, it's not usually been, I guess I would say, we're happy to do that. Or if you have, if you want to get on the record, anything that you're particularly concerned about being in the development agreement, that helps too with us doing the review, either way.
Okay. Any additional discussion on the motion? Counselor McKay?
One thing, my understanding is also in the second development. If you needed to, if there was a problem, you could add more parking, huh? So that is something to think-
So that is something to think about because you are, I love it, I didn't realize that the TDM is a kind of contractual and there's consequences. So if he's feeling that and there's a shortage, then there is that opportunity in the second development. I know because I've talked to you about that, that you can add spaces that are above the 1.5 of the other one to make up for the lack.
Well, actually, I want to make a comment. I, I think, I drove by today and, I mean, the streets are packed, so I don't know. I mean, in my mind, we're adding 62 units. I mean, I sure hope they park at that complex because there's, there wasn't a spot on the street. So that's my reservation is, I mean, maybe they're close to meeting the current criteria, but I mean, I'm just concerned that we're, we're going to get, uh, if there's any overflow, I don't know where it goes, but Mr. Mettler's going to tell me.
So we were on the Foxwood Condos kitty corner on that block. And here's the problem that we have, because we have eight visitor parking stalls over there. And what we find is people will pull up and they'll park in our visitor parking, which is meant for people visiting the, the units there, and they'll walk to BYU. So believe it or not, a lot of that parking that's taken up there, granted at night it's full. Okay, and that's when the residents are coming home. But a lot of the daytime use frankly is people that are parking there that are walking to BYU because of the proximity to BYU. I mean, you're talking two blocks to the edge of the campus there. So that's what a lot of the daytime parking is based upon our observation and, and what we've seen on our property, this kitty corner on that same block there.
Okay. If there's no additional comments or questions, um, I guess I, I was thinking that we would vote on something that, uh, you know, like see the, actually see a development agreement and vote on that, but it seems like everybody's kind of itching to vote. Um, I guess I'd make us, I'll just throw it out. What the heck, give it a try. I'll make a substitute motion that we continue this um, till the next council meeting or, you know, as soon as we can fit it in. And, um, we actually see the development agreement, make sure we're comfortable with it, and it includes the things that people are concerned with such as being able to, or, uh, yeah, just the enforceability stuff and, and the Foxwood piece and I mean, we don't have to, but I'd throw that out there.
I would ask how long the timeline is to get that thing before we continued it.
How long to get it? Um, well, it really, the minimal timeline is pretty fast. I mean, the template's already drafted. There's only really one paragraph of the template that even, there's a special, there's a special obligations paragraph. That's the only part of the template that even needs to be amended. So, um, I've seen it done in as little as two or three days. And I've seen it done in more than a year. It, it depends on the, it depends on the responsiveness of the developer in many ways. But I would anticipate we could probably, that we could, you know, assuming that the developer also is anxious to do this, I'm assuming we could get it to you within a week, to have a week to review before the next meeting. Well.
And I don't think you need a second on that. If, if another counselor wants to continue this, then it automatically continues. So I'll just say I'm supportive of us looking at a development agreement. That's fine. And, and the commitment would be as fast as you, you know, get us looking at it, we'll, we'll review it and get right back to you. So.
Yeah, that, that was the other thing I was going to point out is that this is one of the things, one of the items that's subject to that automatic continuance rule. So as long as two council members indicate they want to continue it, it's continued.
All right. This item's continued. Just feeling a little shaky on some things, so I'll get it cleared up in a couple of weeks. We'll see you again.
Aaron, do you have the template or do you need me to send it to you? Okay, you've got it. Okay.
Thank you for your consideration. We'll be back. Hopefully see you at the next meeting.
Okay. Next item on the agenda. A resolution of the city approval declaring support for the locally preferred alternative for the South Valley Transit Project. We, we heard this, uh, we, we heard this from UTA in the last, um, work meeting, I believe.
Has that a code signal you don't want to hear from me now?
We do want to hear from you.
Okay, just checking.
Now, remind us what we're talking about here.
Very good. Uh, so this is a request, uh, by UTA, and there are UTA representatives. Todd Provost is here. A bit earlier, Commissioner, um, Aserson with UTA was also here. He had a previous meeting he had to cut out to a little bit earlier, and he apologized he had to leave, but he just wanted to be here and support of this, also answering questions. I believe also that Mary Delamar Schaefer with UTA is also on the Zoom link. I, I believe that's the case and can answer any questions. Again, so UTA has worked with, um, South Valley Cities from Provo to Santaquin for a proposed future transit line. Let me just bring up the slide number. That, that one's great, right there, perfect. So they, they considered several alternatives and, and what this request really is is a, uh, just a statement of support by Provo City for what they call the preferred local alternative. And through a variety of studies and public, uh, involvement, uh, and vetting, uh, using various criteria, the, the frontrunner stations and the, the line in the darker blue is the, um, is that correct? That, that is the locally preferred alternative. Um, based on the existing, uh, rail lines from Provo to Payson. Obviously, Provo already has a frontrunner station, and this would extend service through Springville, Spanish Fork, um, on down to Payson, and then potentially to Santaquin with potentially other, um, means of transportation. Um, no, wait a minute. It's not, it's the, I think it's the black line. My apologies, getting my lines confused there. Anyway, um, so UTA is here to, uh, if they have any questions for them, but this, um, this is a request for Provo to uh, adopt or to pass a resolution in support of, um, a, a future frontrunner line down to Payson.
Hi, Mary. Um, can you clarify for us, which line are we looking at here? You're, uh, oh, there you go.
I'm going to ask Todd Provost if you'd come up and, and talk to him because I think you'll hear him better. I'm not.
Okay.
The slides are hard for me. I'm fine.
Yeah, good afternoon or good evening. Uh, the line that is the preferred alternative is along the existing rail corridor, which I'm, I'm not good with colors, but is the darkest color. Yep, there you go. Thank you. Thank you. With, as, as Dixon mentioned, with the station stop proposed, uh, in Springville, Spanish Fork, Payson, and then some sort of, uh, extended bus service from Payson to Santaquin. We have met with, uh, Santaquin, we've met with Springville, uh, Payson and Spanish Fork, uh, adopting this similar resolution as well.
I'm sorry, I missed your name at the beginning.
I'm sorry. Todd Provost with UTA.
Thank you. Thanks, Todd. Counselor Fillmore.
I, I guess I'm still confused. I mean, the, the darkest line is the Tintic rail line.
The, the darkest wide line. So the alternatives that were looked at.
Darkest blue line to the right?
No, in the, in the middle, sir. Yeah.
The, the Tintic rail line is the.
Yeah, that's the Tintic rail line.
That's the line.
It is.
Correct.
And so, so, okay, so your stations in Springville, Spanish.
Springville, Spanish Fork.
And Payson would be on that line.
Correct. Yes, sir.
I just didn't see it. I didn't see a place where those stations would be located. I guess maybe that's.
Additional lines that you see there are other routes that were evaluated or reviewed.
So, so Counselor, there, there are no, so the only identified station location right now, because it exists, is right here in Provo.
Okay.
Those other locations have not been identified on the map as of yet. And that's, uh, that, that's still yet to be determined, but, but the route, this is again for the alternative for the route.
I see. Okay.
Any additional questions?
I have a question slash concern. Maybe it can be addressed by this team. Um, the, I'm looking at one of the documents that was sent to us about the study area, and there's a big blue swath, the transit study purpose, and it shows a frontrunner station, so in the South Valley, and it shows kind of the study area, right, or an impacted area. My concern is that when you look at these maps, and it's, it's, it's harder to understand um, when you're looking at it in plan view. Um, it's easier to understand when you live it. But if you look at where the frontrunner station is now, and the dark blue line, that would be a future commuter rail moving down to Springville. All the folks who live east of that other rail line, not the dark blue rail line, but the second east, I'm not sure how to describe it, but the other rail line. All of them have to cross that rail line where there's a crossing point to access frontrunner stations. So for example, where I live, which is up on the side of the mountain in southeast Provo, folks down here have to drive up and around and down to get to the frontrunner station, or they drive all the way down to 1860 South. Hopefully someone can, hopefully you know where I'm talking about it. Hopefully you're familiar with Provo. Sorry to not explain it perfectly, but you have to drive down to 1860 South, and there you can cross the railroad tracks. And then you can drive up to the, or bike up or walk up to the frontrunner station. And so because of these additional rail lines through Provo, there's a lot less accessibility to the frontrunner station for this part of town. And I think the same thing is true in Springville City. There's only certain points where you can cross the railroad tracks to access a future frontrunner station. And so it just makes it less accessible for all modes of transportation, basically, right? You, you have fewer bus routes that can cross, that can get there because there's fewer crossings of a rail line. Um, harder for pedestrians, harder for bikes, harder for vehicles to find a route that crosses all those rail lines. So my question is, have you considered this? And my hope is that you have considered it. Because, uh, the first and last mile connections to those stations are going, are really rough between Provo and Springville.
Councilmember, if I can, um, talk just from a larger perspective, this is Mary Delamar Schaefer with UTA. Um, this project was intended to look for high-capacity, um, transit in a major corridor. It is not to solve all of our transit issues. And the part of town that you're talking about certainly needs some other planning processes and other kinds of transit access. Um, and a train alone will not, never serve any of us in Utah County enough. So, um, this isn't to solve all of our problems. It's to focus on that central issue of high-capacity, um, high-quality transit, meaning, you know, larger investment. Um, and I'm looking forward to solving, uh, the problems that you're talking about. The area of town where you live is, is difficult to serve. And that's a whole nother, um, planning process, I think, that needs to take place.
Okay. Thank you for that feedback. Um, I am generally supportive of expanding the frontrunner station to the south. But yeah, I mean, the, the accessibility will always be, continue to be an issue in Provo.
Go ahead.
Yeah, if I could. So, um, I don't, we don't have a map of Provo, but in your minds, if you just think about the frontrunner station in Provo, and to Mary's point, that either on the books have been built within the last two years, looking forward to the next three to five. There were 3,500 house tops planned within a half a mile of this frontrunner station in Provo. And once again, Provo leads out in trying to be progressive and provide for. And we're hopeful that communities south of Provo in Springville, Spanish and Payson will also, and that was part of the, this resolution is of support, recognizing that we are looking for hired, or the county in the county of Utah, are looking for higher densities in these areas. And Provo has already done that, and there's more housing to be built. If you think of the frontrunner station there now, uh, there are proposals in the future in other locations within a very close vicinity to, to that location. And you're right, this, this isn't going to serve River Woods or the East Bench or Grandview. You will likely have to take other forms of transportation to the frontrunner station. But to the extent that we can't have higher densities within or proximate to the station is, is ideal to at least capture those house tops.
Thank you. Any additional questions? I guess we will open this, uh, this item up for public comment. Anyone in the chamber like to make a comment on this item?
Very simple question. What does the resolution by Provo City Council and the mayor in, what does that obligate Provo to do? Build flashing crossing guards, lots of, what, what does that obligate us to do?
Good question. Can, would you mind stating your name, sir?
Sorry, Mike Fugel. I live on Cherry Lane, block east of the law building.
F U G E L?
F U G A L.
Thank you, Mike. Um, well, I'll just make a brief answer to your question, which is a resolution just, um, signals to the legislature that, uh, we're supportive of this and that we want them to take a serious look at it and consider it. All right. Um, any comments online? No comments online? Okay, then we'll bring this back for discussion by the council. Any, any, uh, discussion, Mr. Fillmore or Counselor Fillmore?
Just didn't get them all in favor.
Okay. Any, um, thoughts from the city on this?
So it's been really nice. Dixon has been taking, been the point person on this, but I've been highly engaged as well, and I sat on a couple of the studies and I, as I've visited with the mayors and now new mayors of Springville and Spanish Fork. Mayor Wright is still the mayor of Payson, and they are all very excited and looking forward to this coming down south their way. So I am in support of this.
Yeah, seems like a, something beneficial overall. All right. Thank you, Mayor Kufusi. Any additional comments? If not, we'll go ahead and we will, um, vote on the resolution. All in favor? It's unanimous here in the chamber. Um, Counselor Ellsworth? You're on mute. Counselor Handley?
Yes, sorry.
Oh, yes.
All right. That is unanimous. Thank you to the UTA team. Appreciate you taking the time to come out and join our meeting.
Thank you. Love Provo.
Thanks. Okay, um, so our last item. There's no, um, there's no vote that needs to be taken on the next item, is there? Seven? Okay, so we'll be reviewing the Provo City General Plan. We did review this in the, uh, work meeting this morning. So if you're interested in seeing kind of the, uh, comments and conversation and questions that were posed and feedback, uh, by the council, really encourage you all to go back and take a look at that. Um, the primary purpose of this, uh, presentation right now is to inform the public and then also hear any thoughts or feedback from the public on these sections of the general plan that we'll be discussing. And then I think, in addition, depending on the time, um, maybe there might be a few more comments from the council, but hopefully we got all of our, uh, all of our comments out earlier. So, um, let's go ahead and have, is Melissa here? Oh, okay. Melissa and Brandon, um, Melissa McGally and Brandon Larson, planners for the city of Provo, uh, are going to go ahead and present to us.
Okay, um, just, uh, you know, again, as you noted, uh, this is the second of, uh, three kind of informational, you know, we, we're bringing this to you, to the public. Now, we're bringing this to you, to the public, to you, to just kind of get illicit public comment. We've recently had a, you know, work session, our first public hearing, had a mayor's Q and A. And then had, got some more public feedback through the Open City Hall survey. Closed just last, well, just yesterday. So don't have, not going to get into too much of, of the nuts and bolts of this. We've kind of went through it through the, the work session. One thing I will say, you can see the timeline there. The administration's asked for a statistically valid survey, staff supportive of that. And so that kind of puts this project, this, this application on pause. We'll continue to, to work through these work sessions. We will have one in two weeks on the 15th. That'll be the, this third of third work sessions and third of three work sessions and and then we'll work on that on the survey. So if you can go to the next slide, just a quick reminder of how to access the general plan. You can go to the currently, the current version of the general plan. You go to, to provo.org, go to departments, opens up a dropdown box. Hover, hover over Community and Neighborhood Services, Planning, General Plan. You can see the, kind of the path there. Get on the general plan and towards the bottom of the page, you'll see a link to the, to the general plan and a, and a few appendices. So the appendices. So that's, that's really what we've got. If anybody else has any questions, I just, just thought we'd I guess turn it over to you for, to the council to start the public comments. So.
Well, we discussed it earlier, but any questions?
I was going to say, we had quite a discussion this morning. I just assumed go straight to public comment.
Okay. Then that's what we'll do. We'll go ahead and open this item up for public comment. Anyone in the chamber or online, feel free, that would like to comment on this, provide some feedback on the general plan. More specifically, the sections that we, while we didn't really outline which sections. But feel free to come on up.
Hi, I'm Mike Fugel, Cherry Lane, block east of the law building. And in the skimming that I was able to do after getting Katrice's email this past week, I didn't see my main concerns addressed and I'd like that to be considered both by the planning people and by this council before approving it. We need to fix the Provo City businesses. Anybody here major or minor in math or business? By show of hands. Okay, we got one. That's good. Oh, two. All right. Anybody run a business for five years, 10, 15, 20? Okay, great. That's awesome. So why is it we're losing our businesses? How many businesses have we run out of town? Sears Shop Co. and Kmart, we can't blame on Provo. They've closed nationwide. I get that. It's not all y'all's fault. Have you taken a stroll through the town center lately? There's about 30 storefronts that are vacant. It's awful. There's a few new ones are moving in, but the one that hurts the most, Dillard's. They're not closing because of the pandemic. They're not closing because of bad business. They're moving to Orem. Springville and Orem have a Del Taco. We lost ours on Bulldog Boulevard. We need to find out what's luring people away. The thing I cannot wrap my head around is how a a college town loses a, an ice cream shop. Leatherbee's tried twice in Provo and this was long before the pandemic. We lost it to Orem. We need to figure out what to do. Now, I don't know about that. I just teach music lessons. And that doesn't really count the kind of businesses that some of y'all majored in and, and stuff. We need to find whatever it is and fix it. I looked at opening a shop to teach music and hire a couple of other musicians to teach instruments I don't play. I couldn't figure out how I could make it work with the fees, the taxes, the licensing, the regulations, the permits, zoning. It's nonsense. I take my music lessons on the road now because OPEC is cheaper than the red tape. And that's sad. I don't want to do that. Two suggestions I can give you, concrete suggestions. Do you remember back to, to your middle school age? Remember mathematics back then? You remember the equation d equals v t? D is distance. V is velocity. We call it speed. T is time. It means that if you want to travel 60 miles and you've got one mi, one hour to do it, you gotta go 60 miles an hour. That's the simplest example. Anybody want to guess what my average speed is going from my home a block east of Ninth, which is a 35 mile an hour road? I confess, I usually drive at 40. Anybody want to guess what my average speed is to any of the businesses in town that I like to frequent? 17 miles per hour. And that's on a good commute. I've seen it as low as 12 and 13. That's inexcusable. We know how far it is between two intersections. We know the speed limit that our so-called engineers say is safe to drive. Why can't we time the lights? It's easier for me to go to Springville. It's easier for me to go to Orem because I've got University Parkway and I've got State Street. And I live a block away from a 35 mile an hour road, but the lights are horrible. And every change since I bought my grandmother's house on Cherry Lane has made it worse. Fifth North is bad. Seventh North is bad. I don't know what you did between University Avenue and the Maverick on the east side there where State Street bends south, but that was inexcusable. There's no advantage there.
Mr. Fugel?
Yes. Am I out of time?
You're highly entertaining, but this, but you are out of time. So.
Okay. One, one last quick thing, and this is directly to this city council and to your predecessors. When this city council overrode the mayor's veto of the mask mandate, I took every bit of my business to Springville and Orem. And I've found stores that I like there better and that tax dollar's not coming back. Not for fuel, not for groceries and for other things as well. Please don't do that. Keep us our freedoms and we'll keep spending money here. I like spending money in Provo.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry to take too much time.
Thank you. Any other comments in the chamber about the general plan?
My name is Zeke Peters. Once again. So last week I sent a letter to all of you, including the mayor for this organization I represent at BYU, the Students of Urban Planning Association. I'm the president. And I received a response from Counselor Ellsworth and from America Fusi. I understand they are all busy, so I'm here so I can kind of echo portions of that letter. We have been very active and tried to be very active as students and organization in the general plan. I sat on the working committee along with another fellow student who is the vice president of organization. And I, it came as a big surprise when we read the most recent draft and realized that the word equity and equitable had been removed completely from every reference throughout the entirety of the general plan. And from the meetings that I've attended virtually and from what I've heard, it seems it was an administrative decision or it was some, like it wasn't made for a motion and I understand that the plan is at that part in the process. But I would urge the council to revisit this concept. The word equity can be defined as many different things when talking about social equity. Many definitions say the quality of being fair and equal, just and fair inclusion into a society which can participate, prosper and reach their full potential. But I think the biggest thing that we're missing from this plan, I've heard many of you express concerns about aspects that you don't feel are represented enough or represented too much in the plan. And I feel that including equity and focusing on equity in land use, equity in housing and employment and business opportunities. This deals with all of the issues that you are, you are concerning that aren't focused enough in the plan. You represent all citizens of Provo regardless of housing status. If they're a student, I rent. I'm a renter. But according to this plan, so is a majority of this, this community of Provo. I urge the council to revisit this issue, to discuss this on a non-political aspect. Because the term equity and equitable is not a political term. It is not an ideologically liberal term. It is a term that deals with justice for all, equality for all, equity in access to city resources, to housing opportunities and to employment and opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We've got somebody online. Caller ending in seven, five, three, four. Go ahead and unmute yourself and you'll have two minutes.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Hi. Okay. Do I need to state my name?
Yes, please. That'd be great.
Okay, yes. My name is Cynthia Weest. And I had also sent an email out and I don't know if they went to the right people or not. I work at Provo Dental. I live in Orem, but I work at Provo Dental. And one of the things we have joked about is that maybe we should tear down our building and build it into a parking lot because our employees are having a hard time finding parking, parking to go to work. And we're trying to save our parking. Oh, and I'm, I'm in regard to the, is it north? The North Park neighborhood and the Foxwood apartment complex is what, is where I'm talking about. And so our main concern is parking and I, and I know that I've heard a little bit about that there's, you know, legal things set in place that will limit parking and tenants to one car. But I, I, I know that, you know, like maybe that's the intentions of the tenants to have one car, but things come up. And if they need a second car, what are the consequences for the, either the tenant or the landlord to enforce that? Because this morning, my coworker came to work and saw that someone had walked off the street to their car that was parked in one of the businesses next door. There's a foot doctor next to our dental clinic. And, and people are parking overnight in the business parking lot, which is fine because, you know, no one's using it. I don't mind people parking in our parking lot at night. But when our business opens and it starts, if there are cars still parked in our parking lot, that makes it hard for our patients to come to their appointments or to make it to their appointment on time. And there are elderly people too who it makes it hard for them to walk from the street to their appointment. And so our main concern is parking. And if, if there are consequences to that, I would like to know what they are if cars do end up spilling out on the street.
Thank you, Cynthia. It looks like we have another hand raised online. Jennifer Griffin?
Hi, hello.
Hello.
I just wanted, hello, thanks for having me and thanks for being city council members. I know it's a big job and actually I don't know it's a big job. I can see that it's a big job. So I really appreciate that all of you are willing to serve us as Provo citizens and that, that means a lot. I just had a quick kind of statement about the general plan and I read it probably a few months ago. I have no idea where it is and its iterations, you know, currently, but one of the things that I was thinking about was, you know, when we talk about equity and equitable and fairness and these are, these are, you know, very big kind of hot button issue words that, you know, we talk about and and the gentleman before, you know, me brought it up is, you know, it's not a political word and and I do think that it is a word that, you know, immediately sways us one way or the other. And one of the things that I'm, I'm actually glad that it was taken out of the plan because we here in Provo, we have a voice. We have things that we're able to say and join in on Zoom meetings. And I think the most important thing here is that, you know, when we say equitable and equity, it's just that I think there's a, there's a bit of a confusion there that it's, that we think everything is going to be fair and that, you know, that's just not something that the Provo City Council or that people of Provo can guarantee for anyone that we will have fairness in all things. And so I think we can go about saying these things in a different way so that we can be loving members of Provo society. Accept and help give people opportunities without specifically demanding that things are always fair because that's, that's just unattainable to make everything fair. There is one, there is another statement that was, you know, something bigger to me, which was, I, I'm really kind of disturbed. I haven't seen the word family in the general plan. I don't know if it's there now. But, you know, Provo is such a family community and it's something that we really love. And that's something, that's a reason why I live here and many of my friends and coworkers, because we love our families, our extended families, and we want to stay a loving family community. And thank you so much.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any additional callers that haven't commented? I think we got all of them. Okay. All right. If there's no additional public comment, then we'll go ahead and, well, there's nothing to vote on. Oh, sorry. Yeah, Counselor Ellsworth, go ahead.
Yeah, I just was concerned about the last comment. So I did a quick search in the general plan. And I did Ctrl F and then family and it uses the word family 34 times. So I hope that's helpful. I just did that quick search.
Awesome. Quick work. Thank you. Okay, we don't have to vote on anything. So this item's done. And drum roll please. If, unless there is any objection, we will adjourn the Provo Municipal Council meeting by unanimous consent. Thank you, everyone. Thanks to staff and, and thanks to the city staff as well.